So are you guys, I know your family lives out of the state, right?
Um...
.............................................................................................................................. They didn't get married in a Catholic church, he decided that the Catholics after they were married. So they had to remarried in the Catholic church and do all of that whole stuff. They're very ceremonial and very, you know, strict with their...
Yeah.
Their... It's... Too much.
Quiet.
Still got a couple. Talk's a little slow.
Yeah, I've got, I've got... Morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. If you'd please stand and join me in the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Always a pleasure, this time of year, to have the presentation of the annual Calendar Art Contest sponsored by the Farm Bureau and Department of Education. And, but before we do that, we're, we, we sometimes forget that this is an action item, and so we'll do that first. And that is the declaring March 14th to the 20th as a National Ag Week. Of course, Tulare County is vitally interested in agriculture. It is not only our heritage, it is our, our present day economy and future. And being a number two county in the state traditionally, and once I was here on the board and we were number one county in the state, and that meant number one in the nation, so agriculture is extremely important to our county. And so at this time, I'd like to present the proclamation. I believe, Steever, you're going to be our recipient today. This proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, it says, "Whereas Tulare County's total gross agricultural production for 2008 was $5 billion, Tulare County claims $45 million crops that total excess of $1 million in crop value to the county. The county produces more than 240 agricultural commodities. And whereas milk has a total gross value of $1.79 billion, with milk and milk products representing 36% of the county's total receipts for 2008, and Tulare County produces more than 20% of the state's total milk production. And whereas oranges are the second largest crop with $592 million in production, with nearly half the orange crop being exported overseas. And whereas Tulare County's dairy industries produce cattle and calves ranking as the third largest valued crop at $502 million. And whereas Tulare County's fruit and nut crops totaled $1.8 billion in gross value and totaled more than 50% of Tulare County's total export market. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby declare March 20th, 2010 as National Agricultural Day and March 14th to the 20th be declared National Agricultural Week in Tulare County to celebrate the achievements of the men and women who worked throughout the year in the agricultural industry, signed by the members of the board." It's my pleasure to present this to Patricia Steever, the Deputy Director of the Farm Bureau.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all your hard work and the efforts that you make, and yes, we'll have a photo op.
Great.
And I've asked Patricia to go ahead and begin by her remarks, and it'll segue right into the calendar contest.
Great, thank you very much Supervisor Worthley, and welcome and good morning to all the members of the Board of Supervisors and to all of our family and friends and staff here at the county level. National Agriculture Week is celebrated each year to coincide with the arrival of spring and provides us with the opportunity to recognize the producers of food, fiber, flowers, forest, and fish. Less than 1% of our population is involved in farming and ranching, but this very small group feeds our nation as well as many others around the world. Here in the United States, we are blessed with a safe, reliable, and abundant year-round supply of food and fiber. We spend less per capita on our food than any country around the world. In fact, we also just celebrated several weeks back National Food Checkout Week, which recognizes that the average American family of four will have earned enough money by the third week in February to fund all of their food purchases for the entire year. Just a few quick stats about agriculture here in California, and as mentioned in our proclamation, farmers feed the world, and they feed about 144 people in addition to their own family here in the United States. One farmer feeds an additional 144 people as compared to 25 people back in 1960. Here in the Central Valley, 57% of California's agricultural production takes place. If the Central Valley, the San Joaquin Valley of central California, were a state in its own right, it would rank first in agricultural production in the nation. Tulare County, at the heart of California's mammoth agricultural industry, as Chairman Worthley stated, tops over $5 billion in annual revenue and is the leading dairy-producing county in the entire nation. And finally, agriculture is the largest private employer in Tulare County. Farm employment accounts for 26% of all the jobs in this county, and in addition, 10 of the top 15 private employers are food handling, food processing, or marketing companies such as dairy product processors and fruit packing houses. So as you can see, the impact of agriculture to this economy, not only of Tulare County, but to the San Joaquin Valley, is truly immense. National Agriculture Week also provides the perfect backdrop for our annual Calendar Art Contest. And we have partnered on this contest for many, many years now, and we very much appreciate the Board of Supervisors allowing us to make this announcement at one of your board meetings this week. The Farm Bureau, along with the Office of Education for Tulare County, and certainly the Superintendent of Schools Jim Vaidak play a significant role in this contest, as well as the Network for Healthy California. These three partners come together to sponsor this annual contest for kindergarten through 12th grade students throughout the county. As always, I would like to extend a special thank you to our own Farm Bureau's Education Committee. I have our co-chair Sandy Gist Longiano here with us today for making this possible. And a very special thank you to Jim Vaidak. Is Mr. Vaidak here with us today? No. The Superintendent of Schools for his ongoing support of this activity. He brought this activity to us many years ago in the form of a bumper sticker contest in 1997, and it has evolved since that time to its present calendar format. And as always, I want to say thank you to his staff, Randy Wallace, Rob Herman, Noni Roland, and their dedicated team from the county office who helped make the contest possible. This year, we had more than 1,300 entries from dozens of schools throughout the county. Our overall winner will receive $50 cash, and our other 13 winners will receive $25, and of course, a copy of this year's calendar to proudly display. We do have extra calendars in the back of the room for anyone that would like one, and it's certainly our pleasure to provide one to all of you as members of the Board of Supervisors. And we will have more at our office and through the county office of education in the weeks to come. They also will mail one to every school in the county, but we certainly encourage you to grab a copy. It's now my pleasure to announce the winners of this year's Calendar Art Contest. As I call each student's name, please come forward. We'll have you pose over here where Supervisor Worthley and I took a picture, and we'll have you receive your prize and be, have your hand shaken and a photo taken with each supervisor. So if we can start the PowerPoint presentation.
I wanted to point out that Superintendent Vaidak just came into the, into the building. Elvis is in the building, and so let's acknowledge his presence and thank you, Jim, for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first honoree today is Casey Grimes. Casey's a 12th grader from Exeter Union High School. And we need Alan Ashida to come forward, we're starting with District 1. Casey, come on down.
Congratulations.
Can we get the lights up just a little, maybe?
There we go.
Congratulations, Casey. Next, from Snowden Elementary, we have a 2nd grader Tiffany Quintero. Good job. I'm not sure if Suzie made it today, is Suzie in the room? Well, we have Susie Moreno, a 5th grader from Strathmore Middle School. Would her teacher like to accept her award? Okay, come on up. Next, we have Dustin Kong, a 5th grader from Sierra View Junior Academy. And finally, from District 1, we have a 7th grader from Outside Creek Elementary School, Celso Barrera. Thank you, Mr. Ashida. Next, we'll call up District 2 Supervisor Pete Vanderpoel. And from District 2, we have an 8th grader Clarissa Guzman from Los Tulis Middle School. And next, we have Maria Orozco, a 7th grader from Live Oak Middle School.
And I will stay up here for District 3's presentation as well. Supervisor Cox enjoys working with kids, but he doesn't enjoy getting them sick, so he's just going to sit up there next to me and get me sick, so...
Thank you Supervisor Vanderpoel. So from District 3, which is Mr. Cox's district, we'll have Mr. Vanderpoel present the awards to Faith Woodard, who is a 6th grade grader from Crestwood Elementary. Faith. And next, we have Megan Dula, a 7th grader from La Jolla Middle School. We are going to go out of order next, and District 5, have Mr. Ennis join us. And if we can have Eileen Espino, a 7th grader from Burton Middle School. And now from District 4, if we can have Mr. Worthley join us. Our first honoree for District 4 is a 7th grader from Washington Intermediate, Oscar Seha. And next, we have Irving Palafox, an 8th grader from Woodlake Valley Middle School. And for many years, we've had many top contenders from Orosee High School. Our final two honorees are from Orosee this year. We have Maria Guadalupe Diaz Rojas, from the 11th grade from Orosee High. And our overall winner, our cover winner this year, another Orosee High School 11th grader, Yasenia Alcala. Our overall...
I just want to say, she's the overall winner. I've got the check for $50 here for you, we'll go out and have lunch, okay? And also, I wanted to say that I want to thank the, the art program at Cutler-Orosee Schools because I know that we have very many talented students in, in the Orosee School, Cutler-Orosee School District, but I know it also takes leadership to promote this within the ranks, and I really appreciate the work that they do, and, and congratulations to U.S. U.S.A. Media. We have a certificate of achievement, and also a smaller plaque, and also the, the fun. So congratulations to you, and thank you so much for participating, and let's...
Thank you very much to all of the supervisors and to the county of Tulare, and to all of the staff and our friends at the Office of Education and the Network for Healthy California. We annually get very, very excited about this contest because of all the good that it does and all the ways that it provides an awareness about food and fiber and agricultural literacy in our schools. It reaches out to public and private schools across the county, and we just hope that all of you will enjoy a lot of local grown, health, and safe and affordable food this week. We celebrate National Agriculture Week for this very reason, and we thank you again for your time. This concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Before, I know the students probably need to get back to class, and before we have them leave, I would like to give each of the members an opportunity to speak to this matter and express their, their thanks and appreciation for the hard work that went into this entire process. I'll begin on my right with Supervisor Ennis.
Well, always appreciative of the talent that's out there in our communities and our young people. So many great artists, I mean, when you look at these pictures today, these kids, they understand what ag's all about. You know, the, the young, the, I mean, from my area did the citrus, which is one of our big commodities for our area. So congratulations to all the winners, and keep up the good work, and also the teachers that teach them. It's a very, very, in these times, we know it's very difficult times for, for many people, but keep up the good work and keep these kids on the right track. They're our future leaders, thank you.
Ashida?
This is one of those events we have every year that I look forward to. I look forward to see the creativity of the students. They do an excellent job, they convey a message, and if you've ever seen my signature, I do not have any art talent. And I also...
It looks abstract.
Also like to thank their instructors for, for giving them the opportunity to showcase their talents. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cox?
Supervisor Ashida says he didn't have talent, but he did pose for the April picture here in the, in the calendar. Asleep on a tractor. You know, I want to congratulate all the students, you know, as I look at the quality of the artwork, just, just amazing. The, the front page here, Yasenia, where you, you've got this here, just wonderful artwork. I also like to remind folks that Orosee was also the school that was selected for both times that we've done T-shirt contests for the Step Up Summit events. And so Orosee seems like they have it going on, so I'll shout out a challenge to the Visalia Schools to, you know, start taking some lessons, I guess, from Orosee, and let's get our artwork up there. But thank, you guys all did a great job, thank you.
Mr. Vanderpoel?
I just want to thank all of the students for your participation in this year's art contest. The artwork is amazing, you did a great job, and like my fellow supervisors, I too have no artistic talent, so I really have an extra level of appreciation for what you did. It's great to see youth doing positive things for the community. I think that the community benefits from this sort of artwork because they see exactly what goes into the agriculture from the kids' understanding. And I'm hoping that in the next few years, we'll start seeing a little seal in the bottom right of this calendar that says Taste Tulare County, because that's a campaign that we're working on. So thank you very much, it's great to see all the artwork, and we owe you a round of applause, so thank you very much.
Last thing, as Chairman, to get the, get the final word, speak for yourself about your art abilities, okay? One thing I did want to point out, that if you didn't notice it, there was a theme, and it was from farm to fork. You notice that was throughout the artwork that was presented. But one of the things that comes out of this process as we look at the proclamations and the information, and again, the opportunity to bring home the importance of agriculture to Tulare County, is it could just as easily have said from farm to chopsticks. And the reason for that is because it's, it is really the export market that makes our county thrive in agriculture. If we relied upon people consuming food within 100 miles and no more, we would have a very tiny agricultural community. It, we rely upon international exports to make agriculture what it is in Tulare County and in California. And I hope that's part of the, as we bring awareness to agriculture in Tulare County, I hope that's part of that, that basic economic understanding, that without exports, our ag economy would be a fraction of what it is today. Again, I want to thank the, the students for their participation, the great artwork, and for the Farm Bureau and presenting this to us annually. It's a great event, and before I forget about it, because the Clerk of the Level of Boards reminded me two different times, make sure we don't get away from it, we need to have a motion to accept the proclamation.
I'll make that motion that we accept this proclamation presentation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second by Vanderpoel, Ennis, please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you very much for being here today. At this time, we will take up our public comments. The public comment period is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the board on matters which are within our jurisdiction, but that are not on today's agenda. If you are here to make a public comment, now would be the time, please come forward. Give us your name and address. Lots of folks are standing, but I don't think anybody's moving toward the, toward the front, so we'll close the public comment period and then bring it back to the Board of Supervisors Matters, and we'll start on the left, Mr. Vanderpoel.
The one thing that I did want to bring up this morning is just that this week, there's going to be a grand opening of a Family Resource Center down in Earlymark. That grand opening is going to be tomorrow, March 17th, from 12 to 6. Very exciting to have a partner like C-Set down in the community performing positive services for an area that definitely needs it. So I just wanted to point that out, and hopefully we'll get great attendance out there and great support for this organization.
Very good. Mr. Cox?
I'm sporting the cold, so I'm going to keep it short.
Save your voice, okay.
Okay, Mr. Vanderpoel, could you expand on the museum?
Oh, sure. I, I'll, come back to me, it looks like I get two times for Board of Supervisors Matters this week. I, I figured one of the other supervisors would make mention of it. This weekend was the History of Allensworth, the 100 Years History of Allensworth exhibit at the Mooney Grove Park. Very, very well attended, there were several hundred people there. They had exhibitions of their culture out in Allensworth, and it was great. People came from all over the country and even the world. We had some folks come from out of this country to attend this event. So it was a very positive event, great turnout, and it's, again, that agricultural museum is just a great aspect to this community to showcase the various cultures that contribute to agriculture in our county. So it was a wonderful event.
Thank you. Mr. Ashida?
Last Thursday, we had our Step Up Summit in Lindsay, and we had an attendance of over 800 students. It was a very successful event, the venue was great, it worked out very well. This event would not happen, I need to thank the volunteers who met weekly and have been meeting for, for several months to put this event together, and also our staff who spent an awful lot of time. I also like particularly to thank Supervisor Vanderpoel as a vice chair, and the real mortar, the real strength of our Step Up program, like... and the real mortar, the real strength of our Step Up program. I'd like to thank Supervisor Phil Cox for his support, continued support in Step Up. Saturday, I attended the Republican, California Republican Spring Convention. I was asked to speak as a member of five, six people on the issue of water. This is the first time that the Republican Party in the state of California has ever had a forum on water. And it was interesting that there were six, six speakers and we were asked how many of us have ever attended a Republican, state Republican convention? Well, there was only one. So, they took a wide variety of people from the South Valley all the way to the northern part of the county. We had over 100 people in our, in our meeting. And what happened was we had a very small room. There would have been more people, but we ran out of chairs and we ran out of room. From that meeting, we've been asked to make a presentation about water in Orange County to an audience of approximately 500 coming up in April. So, this is our chance to engage the urban people and trying to educate them on the value of water and what water means to everyone in the state of California. So, it was a great opportunity and that's all I have.
Mr. Ennis?
I'd just like to commend Supervisor Shida and Supervisor Vandepoel on the Gang Summit. I attended it. It was very well attended. I thought it was very well organized. Supervisor Cox, you're always there on these situations and did a great job. So, I just wanted to commend you guys on a job well done. Thank you.
Just to follow up a little bit on the exhibit at the Ag Museum, and I want to preface, we should always say the Farm Worker Agriculture Museum because that's the focus of the museum. And when you look at any ethnic group in Tulare County, if you scratch very deeply, you're going to find an agricultural background. And it was a great event, tremendous turnout, but it was also a beautiful day. And I just have to comment, they had a choir, a gospel choir that sang and they were up in the second story. And against that wall of glass, there was this beautiful blue sky with the white clouds. It was, it was truly a Chamber of Commerce kind of a day. And it just added to the festivity. It was a really a great event, well-attended and I'm very happy to be there representing the board. Okay, at this time, then, we will go to our consent calendar items. Are there any items which board members wish to handle separately? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Shida. Please cast your votes. Votes for you, for the consent calendar are unanimous, items four through 17. And that will then take us to our untimed items. Item number 18 is off calendar and as a way of explanation, there has been a recent court decision which will potentially impact our ordinance. And so at this time, we are going to pull it and then we'll have to determine what impact this, this decision will have and bring it back. It may come back in a modified form. It's been delayed so many times. We're very anxious to get this completed. And so, one approach would be to, it appears that perhaps 80, 95% of it will be without controversy. We may bring that portion back to the board for approval and then the part that will remain to be seen as winds its way through the courts of appeal, bring back later. So, that item is off calendar today. And that brings us then to item number 19, Request for Resource Management Agency. We'll have our staff report at this time. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning Chairman Worley, Supervisors Samantha Franks, Tulare County Project Planner for this project. Before you today is the continuation of appeal of zoning administrator's number 3026 approving special use permit number PSP 08081ZA for the establishment of a worship facility on an 18.38 acre parcel in the AE20 zone, exclusive agricultural 20 acre minimum zone west of the city of Dinuba. A public hearing was held by your board on March 2nd, 2010, and you received staff presentation and public testimony on this project. The items your board identified to be addressed were sewer, paving of the parking lot, finalization of the parking lot, phasing of school improvements in relation to this project. Item one, in reference to the sewer connection availability, staff attempted contact with the city of Dinuba but was unable to obtain that information. However, Dan Meiner advised staff that he will represent the city of Dinuba and address this issue. Item two, paving of the parking lot. The parking lot shall be temporarily improved with decomposed granite with chip slurry seal. All underground infrastructure shall be completed during the first phase of this project. This is reflected in condition of approval number 13 and 15. Item three, finalization of the parking lot. All of the parking areas shall be paved prior to or concurrent with phase two of this project. This is reflected in condition of approval number 14. Item four, phasing of school improvements in relation to this project. An employee of the school indicated to staff that the tentative timeline for the school's infrastructure was two years. This is the school site in relation to the project site and the city limits. This, the site is located in the city of Dinuba Urban Development Boundary. Staff has modified and added conditions of approval. Existing condition of approval number 14 is now condition of approval number 17 has been modified to read, "The project shall be designed with the infrastructure necessary for hookup to city sewer once it becomes available from any available hookup within six months of availability or as requested by the city." The old condition read, "The project shall be designed with the infrastructure necessary for hookup, for hookup to the city sewer once it becomes available." The following planning conditions of approval were added by staff. Number 13, the parking lot shall be temporarily improved with decomposed granite with chip slurry seal. Number 14, the entire parking lot shall be paved prior to or concurrent with phase two of the project. Number 15, all underground infrastructure shall be completed during the first phase of this project. Number 23, the landscaping plan shall be modified to include fast growing evergreen trees or fast growing evergreen hedge along the west 2/3 of the south property line. The plants shall be at least five feet in height when planted. The resolution has been amended to include the following. The board has announced its final decision for purposes of appeal. Judicial review of this Board of Supervisors' decision is appealable to Code of Civil Procedure Section 109.4, 1094.6. Through these amended conditions of approval, the appellant's concerns have been addressed. Staff recommends that your board deny the appeal filed by Mr. and Mrs. Furia, accept the negative direction, negative declaration as the appropriate environmental document and approve the attached resolution with findings and added modified conditions of approval for, for special use permit number PSP 08081ZA. The alternative would be that your board approve the appeal and thereby deny the project based on the findings and conditions to be prepared and returned at a future meeting. Subject to any questions, this concludes staff's report.
Ms. Franks, did these conditions, were they, did you consult with the applicant in coming up with these new conditions of approval or was this just on, on your own from our own staff?
This was on my own.
There's been no, there's been no consultation with the applicant?
No.
And I see that from the city of Dinuba, we have their Assistant City Manager here who was going to address the issue about sewer hookups. So, perhaps it would be appropriate, unless there's other questions of Ms. Franks from other members at this time? Mr. Meiner?
I can't, Mr. Chair. While he's making his way up, I think she was, the other conditions, I think, was what she gleaned from our conversation during the last public hearing. I think she did a very good job on it.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dan Meiner. It's spelled M-E-I-N-E-R-T. I'm the Deputy City Manager for the city of Dinuba. I understand there's a question about sanitary sewer availability and connection to this site. First, the comment would be that the city doesn't normally extend sewer. Developers would extend sewer as they would develop in this area. There are a number of subdivisions that are intentative mapped to the east of this property. Given the current economic situation, I would say that we're probably not going to see development of those subdivisions for some time, probably five years or so. Reference was made to a project that's indicated to be done by Dinuba Unified School District to construct a school site north of this site, of the, of the subject site. Plan that, that the school district has according to what we've seen would be to extend water and sewer on Road 68 from their connections on Elmani Way or Avenue 416 north to the school site. And in doing so, they would go immediately past this site. The staff report indicated that at the earliest, that would be 2012, that project would be done. Some of our information would indicate that, again, given the economic situation and the district's ability to raise bond money right now, it may be beyond that point. So, maybe by 2015. And I'm not sure if there's anybody from the school district here to respond to that. So, answer any other questions regarding sanitary sewer.
Are there any questions from board members? Thank you, Mr. Meiner, for being here this morning. Appreciate.
I would like to make one comment about the availability of water.
Yes.
The applicant for the project has, has requested the extension of services of water. He found, or the applicant found in the development or process of their site, that the well was not suitable for potable purposes. We also have anecdotal information about other wells in the area that most of the wells contain unacceptable levels of nitrates. They also contain unacceptable levels of DBCP, which is relatively easy to treat. The nitrates are not relatively easy to treat. Same extension of services policy that the city agreed to extend water to the applicant's site would be available to other sites in the area, assuming that they were willing to adhere to the conditions of our extension of services policy. So, if someone's well fails for whatever reason, they could get city water without too much difficulty.
Thank you, Mr. Meiner.
If I can, Dan, two quick questions. The city has no, is not opposed to this project, then?
We are not opposed to this project. The project, as indicated in the staff report, is in our urban development boundary. It is currently not in our sphere of influence. We are beginning a process, actually, we have a meeting next week with your staff, with LaFco staff, to start the process of amending our sphere of influence to include this area. I do have copies of our general plan that I can leave for the board. Multiple copies.
And so, this, that would tell me that this project fits in the planning or the future planning of the city then for this area?
The project would be consistent with our general plan in as far as its churches are allowed as a conditional use permit in any residential district. As a single family and, and the district would be single family, medium density residential, that would support about six units per acre, you know, and on a site of this nature, that would support about 110 single family dwelling units. And you start looking at traffic generation and that would generate about 1,100 trips a day off of this site. I believe the, the church use, even a buildout, would only be 700 trips on a peak day, which would be Sunday. And that'd be one day a week. So, from a, from our standpoint, the city's standpoint, this project would be consistent with our general plan and is consistent with our long-range planning for this area.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is not a public hearing, but obviously there are folks who may want to address this matter. I'd like to hear from the applicant about the conditions of approval that have been indicated today. Morning, Mr. Wallace. Would you please give us your name and address?
Sure. Mark Wallace, 1710 East Gerald, Dinuba. And Mr. Chair and members of the board. A couple of quick things. First of all, I would like to submit to you a potential landscaping plan that we have developed. This is just in a very infancy stage, but I think you could see on this that our intention is to, to fully develop the landscaping. I don't know if I can pass this down for you all to see. There are two conditions that are of concern to me. One, when the staff put these new conditions on us, we were not notified of any of this over the last two weeks. There was no phone call to my office or my builder's office regarding any of this. However, I do not have a problem with the requirement for us or the condition for us to hook up to city sewer within six months. I also do not have a problem with paving prior to the second phase. The concern I have is when the dictation of the certain plant life, I believe that it would be more appropriate since our neighbors' concern is primarily the amphitheater, as they have indicated, for very large events. I believe if you look on, on here, you'll see that the landscaping totally covers that if full buildout. You know, I'm, I'm very concerned about the fact that it seems to me that item number 17 or condition number 17, that it needs some clarification for me. According to this, it, I, I believe it was written, and staff may want to weigh in on this, I believe it was written in the spirit of a very large event such as the Passion production that we held last year, which by the way, we delayed this year as a courtesy to our neighbors until the board weighed in on this. But I believe that that was supposed to be outside major events, not just events of any sort. I don't believe it's fair or proper for this board to limit the amount of a wedding or a vacation Bible school or a church service for that matter as that would violate our First Amendment rights to assemble and the freedom of expression. And so, I would respectfully ask the board to reconsider just adding one word to condition number 17, which would say outside major events allowed each year. And then you may want some clarification of a major event. I would, I would agree that the Passion would be considered a major event. As far as the hedges, I really don't have a problem putting, we really had intended to put that down the south as well as the west side anyway. The problem I have is to dictate that at the time of planting, it's got to be five feet minimum. I don't know if you look at the length of that, but that is a huge expenditure just to even begin construction and to take occupancy of our, of our, of our building. I just don't believe that that.
Mr. Chair, can I stop you real quick?
One is fair.
I'm looking for 17 on our list and it does not match. Number 20?
Sorry, I did not have the updated.
That's about flood.
We're talking about the amplified. I have one, planning conditions number 20 that talks about amplified events outside. I have another 20 that's, it's in a flood zone. Which, which page, number 20, are you talking about? Okay, so the number, I mean, can, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Attack it one at a time. The number of amplified outside events allowed per year shall be two with a limit of three days per event. That's, that's one of the.
That's one of my concerns, yes, sir. Because again, I believe that that was written in the spirit of a major event such as the Passion. You look at the previous conditions there and the argument of our neighbor, it is really regarding that major event each year. We have no problem with that because we would only do it once a year and perhaps, you know, some out. you know, some outdoor event another time. But, you know, we have, I have three weddings right now that are wanting to be planned on the property, a couple hundred people wanting to come out and hold their wedding at the amphitheater. And, of course, they're going to have a little bit of amplification. It's not that they're going to have a big band out there and whatnot, but under this condition, we couldn't even hold a wedding out there, let alone-
Excuse me, what was the language you were proposing?
To just change it to a major event, the maximum number of amplified outside major events allowed. I don't believe it should be considered for minor events like that. I do want to respect our neighbors, also want to call your attention to the fact that in the previous condition, our noise level is already mitigated. And so however we mitigate that should be our responsibility and our own option. I don't believe these additional mitigations should be added to us. As long as we comply with the noise level, then what does it matter how often we use our own property? Any questions from the board?
I think your point's well taken. As far as the plantings, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other about that, because depending on, really, it's the kind of plant material you plant, as opposed to the height, from a beginning standpoint, because some stuff grows a lot faster than others. So it really should be based upon more of a fast-growing type of a plant, as opposed to the size you plant now. You could plant something which is five feet tall now, and very slow-growing, and really not accomplished much, or plant something which is three feet tall, and it grows very rapidly, like oleander bush, or something like that, and you'll have plenty of height and noise protection in a short time.
Sure. Which number are we looking at now?
Well, that was the, that was the new condition that was numbered, it says 23 on the front, and I guess it's 23 on page 10, and that was modified to state, it says fast growing, but they had requested that there be at least five feet in height at the present time. And obviously, as stated by the applicant, the larger the plant, the more expensive it is to plant it, and you don't necessarily gain a lot in terms of sound protection, because a fast-growing plant will, even if it's short when you plant it, it'll grow rapidly, as opposed to something which grows slowly. So I would think that might be an excessive type of a condition. And I'm also sympathetic to the idea that when you say you have decibel levels you have to maintain, however you maintain that, whether it's done through plant vegetation, or it's done through redirection of sound, or elimination of amplified sound, again, I think the point's well taken. You have to meet these standards, whatever those standards are. So, anyway, I'm inclined to agree that those modifications would be appropriate.
Mr. Chair, can I respectfully disagree, having seen a lot of commercial city projects where not only do they tell you how big the pot needs to be, and how high the plant needs to be, but they give you a list of exactly what you can. So I lean the other side, to where I don't think you can get an evergreen tree, a fast-growing evergreen tree, that's less than five feet tall. I don't think I've ever seen them. The hedge might be something else, but I tend to agree with staff on this, that we need to be a little more specific about our plantings and our regulations when it comes to the, I'm not going to call it curb appeal, but to the setbacks and so forth from the streets, and how they're planted. You're looking at adopting a more stringent requirement than we have in the past. I mean, and I would agree with the more stringent requirements.
Well, if you're talking about trees, I don't disagree with you. But if you look at trees from the standpoint, in other words, a five-foot-tall tree is five feet tall, but its actual foliage at the fifth foot is virtually nothing. So you're not really getting a lot of benefit. If you're looking at planting like something like oleanders, I don't think you can buy an oleander that's five foot tall. You can buy a three-foot-tall, or a two-foot-tall, and you're going to rapidly have a six-foot-tall plant. But I think it does more in terms of sound protection, which goes to your point about maybe being more specific in terms of the types of plants. But I don't see anything magical about, in other words, if you planted five-foot trees, that would not be as much of an obstacle as trying to plant five-foot bushes, because bushes, you just don't buy five-foot bushes. But you could buy shorter bushes that would achieve a lot more from the sound protection than you would from trees.
And our intention along that is to plant shrub, a hedge of shrubs. We think that that's probably going to be the largest foliage, that's going to protect the privacy of our neighbors, as well as our own. And, you know, again, I would agree that I don't know what necessarily hedges are going to do for sound. That's something we have to tackle, based on the decibel level that's been approved, and we're just going to work on that. I will tell you that we are working on engineering something for the amphitheater, to protect that area, and to redirect sound, and to do it. I don't believe a block wall is the answer, because a block wall does nothing but shatter the sound and send it out. It doesn't redirect, it doesn't absorb in any way, shape, or form. And it's ugly, and it's a magnet for graffiti. And so, we believe there are more excellent ways. We've been looking into some items that are much more, much more protective of sound, and would detonate.
Might I suggest, Mr. Wallace, that perhaps the one way to modify this would be that trees would be at least five feet tall, but shrubs would be fast-growing shrubs? I mean, I think that would be a reasonable approach, and achieve the idea of larger trees, if you're going to plant trees, but shrubs, I think it is unreasonable to-
That would be fine. And this is prior to the construction, but, again, we would like to be able to have a picnic out there, or what have you, even prior to construction, those types of things. Regarding the water, it's not on here, but the deputy city manager referred to this. Look, we're already bringing water to our corner. I have no problem extending it to my neighbor's corner. I'm not going, you know, I don't believe it's my responsibility to hook them up, but if they want city water to their corner, it's not that many more feet. We're not trying to be unreasonable. We'll be happy to help them out in that. I would say that if they deny that, that I would also like for our protection, because they've been so adamant regarding our septic, that we would be happy to have twinnings come out and test their well prior to our construction, because I would want to measure their current, so that there could be no accusation later as to a contamination of their well, that I would submit is probably a red contaminator, and not fit for potable water. So, I would just like that as a protection, and we'll be happy to flip the bill for that prior to our own construction. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Raper, you're up there. Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Chair members of the board, Jake Raper, Director of RMA. Some of the concerns, or some of the concerns the applicant has raised, were not deliberated during the public hearing process. And so in order to consider changing additional conditions that were not focused on in the public hearing process, we may be appropriate to re-notice the public hearing if the board is inclined to change additional conditions that are part of this application. It is a, at the conclusion of your public hearing, the board directed us to look at those specific areas. We did that, we modified those conditions, and presented those to the board. I think you have the leeway within those areas that we focused on in the conditions to change, modify, delete, whatever you wish. However, during the public hearing process, the other conditions were not raised as a concern, nor considered as modifications. So that may be a concern, and we may want to consult county council.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this matter is on foreclosed session, and I would suggest, given the new information that's been presented, it would be appropriate for us to adjourn to closed session.
Before we do that, I noticed that the appellants are also here. They may wish to address this this morning. I want to give them that opportunity before we go into closed session.
Can I ask Jake a question?
Yes, Mr. Raper, before you sit down? Mr. Cox has a question for you.
Are you saying that we can't do minor modifications to 20 and 23, as we sit here today, without noticing a new hearing?
It's by understanding that condition, now number 20, was the condition established by the planning commission, and not modified. Now, that was not raised up as an issue during the public hearing, in terms of the terms of events and the activities. So that would be a little bit of a concern in terms of the process. The number 23, which discusses the landscaping, that issue was brought up. I feel the board has certainly the leeway to modify that to whatever your discussions you had just previous. So I think you have that ability to do that as well.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Faria? And again, we're being recorded, so if you give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jose Faria. I live at 41862 Road 68. The property immediately south of this proposed development. Well, I appreciate some of the comments, the willingness to help us to connect with the city water, but I think we still have a problem with the, and I'm clear with the sewer, with the sewer issue. I know they're willing to connect to the city, but until the sewer line is available, it's going to have some time, we're talking about years. And according to my calculations, it will take months, basically eight months, 10 months, for such a large septic system to reach the groundwater. And I'm not the only one that's been affected, will be affected, the neighbors, the parcel that was split of this proposed development, the one acre, the well is very close to this development, they will be affected by this. And the, also, the people that live on the other side of Road 68, just immediately west and south, will be affected by the further contamination of the groundwater. So you're not talking about DBCP, you're talking additional loads of nitrogen, and talking about other loads of perhaps bacteria. So they will have to, you know, increase the treatment of the groundwater. So, it will be, I think it will be nice if the city agrees not only to provide and extend the sewer line to them, to prevent this type of impact. I don't see, they say they're going to hire a registered engineer, but I don't know what kind of measures they're going to take to prevent the spilling of this water, of sewer water into the groundwater. If you're going to put in perspective, the analysis that the RMA made says there will be about 200 trips a day, there will be 50 people working from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., and then the church is going to expand from 500 to 1,000 people. You're looking at, this is a, if you compare to development, city development, you're looking like a, from 200 people, like 40 homes, 50 homes, and then 1,000, would be 200 homes, like apartment complexes, basically discharged into a mound of sand, that basically, that's the water that's underneath that. So that's my concern. I don't think that has been properly addressed on this. So, I'm asking you for your consideration. Another point, too, is that Road 70 has not been considered. I know that during the services, they're going to block the lines, allow traffic in and out, but how about the other 200 trips? They're going to be in and out, going on the east side road, which they're going to spill eventually over Road 70, which is an agricultural road, and it's going to create issues with dust on the farmland in that area, and so on.
Thank you, Faria.
Mr. Chair, what is that?
Yes?
None of my other neighbors are of concern. The parcel that was split off, there's been no concerns whatsoever from those folks. We have great relationship with all the other neighbors. They obviously are very well taken care of in that. As far as the sewer and our septic system, it's all mitigated already. We've got that covered. This notion that we have 50 employees is ridiculous. We have 15 at the very maximum. Four or five of those are part-time, very part-time. Staff asked me to estimate a maximum time and people coming in and out of there throughout a day, and that's what I did. They told me, quote, "Stretch it to the outer limits, because that will be your limitation." So, you know, I think that notion that we're an apartment complex is absolutely ridiculous. Thank you.
We're going to go to closed session to hear from our council.
This is item B on your board's closed session agenda.
Is there something else you wanted to add, or new? Okay. If it's just he says, she said, I didn't read it one again to that.
We spoke with Mr. Dinger, our neighbor, last night, and he agreed with us, and he told us, in fact, he's the one that said, "Don't forget to mention Road 70." This is Irma Faria, 41862 Road 68, Dinuba. So, I just wanted to clarify that. I do consider a wedding a major event, and right now, everything just changed. So instead of just those two events, now there's going to be weddings going on and such, and more concern for the noise, for the dust, for the toilets. And it limits the operation, it's going to be operated from 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, seven days a week. And I know 50 is, now he's, you know, it's clarification on the 50. It probably won't get there for a few years. Tie second phase to the, to something, you know, to the septic tank, to the 50. Maybe reduce the 50 to 20, and then we put 50 when it's tied into the septic, and we don't have issues, and when the landscaping's grown. And I want to say, too, that my appeal wasn't to deny the project, but was for additional mitigation, because we didn't feel the resource agency had done enough. So it wasn't to deny it, but was for additional mitigation. I thought that should be cleared up, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're in a closed session now. Well, we can begin, because we have county council represented by attorney. So let's begin. I wanted to say that I need to make a few preface comments. There was some new information. The issue about the number of events under amplification was not addressed during the public hearing that was held at the previous board meeting. This is not a public hearing, and therefore, we are not allowed to make decisions based upon information that is brought today. So in order for us to proceed forward today, we will only be able to deal with the issues that were raised at the last public hearing, and have been addressed, and the mitigation that was requested by staff today. So at this time, I would entertain any comments or motion from members of the board about how to proceed at this point.
Well, I do need to make one comment, one disclosure. I was contacted by the appellant via email, and I did inform her that I would have to make my decision based upon information presented in a public hearing, so I would not be able to consider anything new, and that is what I am basing my decision on today.
I have a comment.
Yes.
To be consistent from my education in planning at the President of State College, and the criticism the board supervisors have been receiving from the cities about allowing development in the UBDs, this is a development in the UBD outside of the city limits, and it's surrounded by agricultural properties, and this is, to me, is a form of leapfrog development. So for that reason, I will not support this project.
And I would like to just comment, too, I'm, the comment that I will make is that this project has been mitigated. It is considerate of the neighboring agricultural operations, and I do feel that, you know, obviously, for the reasons stated during the public hearing, that land within the city limits is very expensive, and makes it very difficult for this type of a development to occur. So they did seek a location just outside of the city limits, that is going to be next annexed into the city. So I think they are considerate of all of the things that have been parts of our discussion with the cities, and also the concerns that have been mentioned by the appellant today. So I do feel that they have really done a lot of due diligence, and a lot of- So I do feel that they have really done a lot of due diligence and a lot of extra effort to make sure they are good neighbors, and considerate of general plans and city, county, et cetera.
I would also have to add to that, that special use permits for this purpose are allowable in the ag zone, and so this is not inconsistent with our existing general plan. This time entertain a motion? No further comments?
I would make the motion that we deny the appeal, and go ahead and approve the, actually, that's all we're doing, is just denying the appeal. That's all I'll make.
That would include then the mitigation measures that were presented by staff today, with a change on the plant material, as far as five feet for trees, and then not for five feet for shrubs, is that correct?
And I would make that part of my motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
And before we take a vote, I see our planning directors here to make a comment.
Chairman members of the board, today, your decision is to deny appeal and adopt the attached resolution approving the findings, the environmental document, and conditions associated with the project.
Okay, that was his motion.
Okay, so I will make the motion to deny the appeal, adopt the conditions, and also the additional specification of the plants that were going to be part of the development.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. Vote is four to one for approval, shoot of being a no vote. Thank you all for being here this morning, and that will take us into item number... Big pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Faria, please come forward.
I just wanted to clarify that the leapfrog notion there, because they did have 12.89 acres in city limits that they had purchased for their church, and they sold that and bought this property. And that was done in the last just couple of years. So it was trying to avoid the city rules.
Thank you. Okay, we go to item number 20, request from the county administrative officer to receive the mid-year budget report. Maybe we should have done this earlier, or we had a crowd.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Worthley, board. I'm Gene Rousseau, county administrative officer of County Tulare. I will be giving an overview of, well, before I start, let me thank my staff for preparing this report and helping me prepare for this presentation. Martin Meyer, Paul Guerrero, Debbie Vaughn, Kerry Boggs, Eric Coyne, Carol Pytling, and Kristen Bennett. And I'd also like to thank the departments, before I forget, for their efforts in being good team players this year, and helping us balance our budget during difficult times. And I don't believe that the difficult times are over, and we'll go into that here shortly. The topics of my discussion today will be review of the mid-year review of this current year budget, 2009, 2010, a fiscal outlook for next year's budget. I'll quickly go through some potential state budget impacts that we're still waiting for the legislature and the governor to figure out how to pass. And I'll quickly go through the budget development schedule that we've had in place for a number of times, and then my recommendations. You know, these next two slides are slides I like repeating each year or every six months, just to talk about some of the protocols that we use and have used over the last few years that have brought us to this point in time. We've typically budgeted a normal revenue amount instead of inflated revenues, which are critical during the boom-to-bust time period that we're currently experiencing. We're doing the best we can to adhere to a structural fund balance target that's difficult to do during these times. And we will continue to improve the structural budget that, I'll go into a little bit more detail later in my presentation. One area, use of one-time revenues for one-time purposes and for future budgetary challenges, which I added this last year to help us prepare for this year and next year. And last but not least, we, something that Supervisor Cox is fond of, is the sale of assets or any changes in our lease agreements, the difference proceeds of which will go to the, for future capital needs, which we all know we need. And here's a typical budget equation. To put it in briefly, our general fund departments all spend more than they bring in in revenues. The collective difference in, is made up with carryover fund balance and countywide revenues. So it's critical that we have growth, that we have a consistent structural carryover fund balance, that we know we can get to each year. What does that mean? Those are the savings that we've not spent, of appropriations that we've underspent, and typically excess county revenues. I want to briefly go through what this current year budget, the shortfall, and some of the things that we put in place to help bridge the shortfall. As we all know, the general fund had a $12.7 million shortfall. We reduced departments' budgets, or their share of these, of what we refer to as net county cost, or carryover fund balance and countywide revenues, from seven and a half to up to 11% across the board. We gave the department heads, since they have experience, more experience than they would like, and during difficult times, we gave them the discretion to meet their targets by using savings from labor actions and other operational efficiencies. The global labor action we took last year, that will be, that will be starting the negotiation process here in the next month or two, is we froze and there are suspended merit and step increases, which had a, which has had a negative impact on morale, as we expected, unfortunately. We froze deferred comp matches for the groups that were eligible to receive it, sick leave buybacks that also upset a group of employees, and a week-long furlough, which amounts to about 1.9% reduction to all the bargaining units that were, that were, we negotiated with last year. In addition to that, departments, as a part of their need to meet their budgetary targets, collectively in the general fund, non-subvented departments are holding 71 positions unfilled for a total of savings of approximately $5 million. So when you look at the global labor actions and the amount of positions that are being held, that's approximately 6.7 million, or 53% of the shortfall was met with those items. The rest were met with operational efficiencies, layoffs, program reductions, and what have you. One area that I'm somewhat proud of, and is an ongoing effort on this office's part, and something that your board has pushed significantly over the last few years, is control and go after the cost drivers to the general fund. The cost drivers, as we well know, initially, the fire department was a problem four or five years ago. CDF's costs were escalating faster than we could accommodate them, and after closing a number of fire stations, we ran the numbers, did a lot of research and worked behind the scenes, and determined with your board's approval that we could build our own fire department and do it cheaper and better, and we've done that. The effect of that has really stunted the impact to the general fund. The fire department has basically had the same budget since its inception, and in fact, this year took a 7%, 7.5% reduction, like every other public safety department, without any service level impacts. We also, years ago, converted to a self-insured program for workers' compensation. We were the last county in the state to do that. That's been a tremendous success. We've used that fund, which has built up to approximately $30 million as of June 30, 2009. It's allowed us some flexibility with respect to this year's budget and next year's budget. In other words, it'll help reduce some of the shortfalls that I'll go into in a little bit. It also has allowed us to internally finance car purchases, which has reduced the cost of interest associated with those purchases, and has kept that interest in the county pool, which is where we want it to be. We also were being impacted somewhat with information technology. We'd had a vendor provide IT services for over, little over 15 years. None of us were really happy with the vendor. The costs were going up. There was a level of attitude on their part, and like the fire department, we looked at that, looked to see if we could do it cheaper and better ourselves. We determined we could. We brought in a fantastic IT director who's done a great job, and we combined it with our MIS IT department to, again, to control those costs. Her budget has stayed the same since we left, since we terminated the contract with the vendor, and thereby have held the general fund somewhat harmless, and improved service levels. At the same time, I've gone through it before, we replaced IT programs in our four public safety departments. We're continuing the process of integrating those programs, which is, which is an interesting long-term process. But it's, we're in much better shape from a technology standpoint in those four than we were definitely going in. And it can only improve. Chairman, you mentioned how we're doing electronic filing in one of the courtrooms, and that process is continuing as we speak. We also established countywide protecting the bottom-line committees. As I've said, this is a bad time. It's going to stay bad for a period of time, and we need all the input from the community, from our employees, and everybody to help us get through this. I certainly don't have all the answers. I don't even know if I have half the answers. And that's why the, our employees in the trenches, who work day in and day out, providing services to our constituents, have come up with a number of ideas to save money, generate revenue where it's reasonable and necessary. And we've incorporated quite a few of those in the way we do business, and we will be looking to incorporate more where it makes sense. We'll be putting those out on our county website, that I'll mention at the end of my presentation. So our employees and our constituents can look and see what the county is attempting to do to try to mitigate this very difficult situation we find ourselves in. In addition, our HR director, Tim Huntley, worked with our consultant to go self-insured for health insurance. We've created a JPA with the county of Fresno, and our health insurance premiums are not going to increase next year. That's beneficial to our employees, it's beneficial to us as an employer, it says a lot about Tim Huntley and his abilities, and this board's desire to try to mitigate the situation we find ourselves in. Also, we've got to be one of the first counties in the state that met with our retirement board and asked them to help work with us to smooth the investment losses that we incurred in fiscal '08-'09 over a longer period of time. They agreed to smooth those losses from a five-year period to a 10-year period. We're still going to be impacted. I believe the retirement costs for next year reflect that change, along with some of the staff reductions that we made in '08-'09. But that's a very positive thing. A lot of counties are envious of that. And just to put it in context, PERS counties will probably not be impacted as significantly as 37 county counties, because PERS decided a month or two ago to smooth over a 30-year period, which is long from my perspective. But based on the impact of retirement increases to counties that I'll go over in a little bit, it might not be a bad idea. Certainly something to consider. Another thing that we've done is we've reached out to our local superior court. We have a good working relationship with them, despite their, the litigation over our pension debt that I won't go into. We've, we basically, yes, we basically told them, "We're in a difficult situation, we're going to have a hard time manning the courtrooms, it's imperative that we work together in future calendaring changes and what have you." And they've been very good in working with us, and the sheriff's department for that matter as well they should. And I just look forward to continued positive coordination with that group. And last but not least, something that's taken my office more time than I would like to think, and still has more time to yet to put into, is we're currently restructuring a general services department. We brought general services under my purview. That is the last significant cost driver, the level of internal services that we choose to provide to ourselves. It's been a source of consternation for far too long. We're in the process of cleaning it up, and I'd like to think doing it cheaper and at the same level, and that remains to be seen. But Kristen Bennett, Brian Summers, and Ted Phipps have done a tremendous job working with that group, re-energizing them, empowering them to take control of their department and the services that they provide, and I look for nothing but positive changes going forward.
Gene, before you run off and leave that, I mean, you can go to this next slide, but one issue I had asked you to address, because I think, again, one of the cost drivers of any government is the cost of labor. And you had indicated to me before the meeting that in the last two years...
I'll get to that in the next slide.
Well, it will show up, okay. All right, thank you.
This next slide kind of tells the story of the backslide that the general fund has made in the last two years, and really is unfortunately the precursor for what I see the future holds for at least the next couple of years. You can see fiscal year 2007, '08, we peaked out in our general fund budget at almost $623 million. And at that time, we had 4,129 positions at the beginning of the fiscal year. We started the beginning of this fiscal year, fiscal 2009, '10, with 3,524, which are 605 positions less, or approximately 15% less positions in a matter of two years. So how have we dealt with our deficit? We've laid folks off, we've eliminated positions, we've furloughed our employees, we've frozen other fringe payments that has upset virtually every employee in the county, or quite a few employees. But it is what it is.
If you go back further in time, just before you move on, though, I can remember when we used to have 4,800 positions at the county level, not that many years ago. So when we say 4,129...
Well, this is, again, this is a general fund.
Oh, all right.
This is just a general fund. The other, you know, other departments have had some level of reduction in positions, but the general fund is what we're focused on right now. There are a lot of ways to look at the success of the current year budget, and these are two, these next two slides are fairly consistent from year to year. They're helpful, they're one of the tools that you use to look at how your budget's going. Obviously, we interviewed departments, we went line by line through their budgets, sometimes against their will. And the reality is our mid-year revenues are relatively consistent with where they've been the last, at least the last four or five years. So that's a barometer. Expenditures are the same matter. We beat them to death, we're looking at changes, and they're fairly consistent from year to year. Despite the fact that we do, we do charge for workers' comp and a few things at the beginning of the year for budgetary purposes, the percentages are consistent with prior years. Most importantly, all general fund departments are projected to meet their targets, except the Resource Management Agency. It has experienced a lot of changes this year, and most likely will experience changes going forward. There are some costs associated with our long-term general plan that we will be rolling out next week, but that's the only department that at this point we project to be slightly over their target. Again, this last year, because of our conservative budgeting, our property tax estimates and VLF estimates, which are tied directly to assessed value, we knew what they are since we budgeted in September, so those came in where we expected. We reduced our sales tax estimates, both statewide, Prop 172, and local sales tax, Bradley Burns, by 20%, and they appear to be holding up. Knock on wood. And most importantly, and again, from my perspective, a very important barometer of the success of a current year budget is our structural carryover fund balances is projected to be met at fiscal year-end. General fund fiscal outlook for fiscal 2010, '11. We have a stalled housing market at best. Our, I'll go into it a little bit, our assessors projecting the assessed value roll for this coming year to be reduced by 5%, which isn't, which isn't good news. As you might have seen lately, the unemployment rate in our state is the highest in its history. Recently, there's been, counties up and down the state that I'll go into in a little bit to put our condition relative to our counterparts in perspective. They are, they're looking at reductions, furloughs, layoffs, and what have you. Schools announced potentially 25, 26,000. Schools announced potentially 25,000, 26,000. Teachers might lose their jobs this year. I really don't see how we're going to climb out of this economic problem that we have with, with what the government is going to be doing the next couple of years. But hopefully I'm wrong. We will have static overall retirement costs next year. We're really different from the average county because again, I believe the layoffs that we employed in '08-'09 that, in John's shop to bring his fiscal house in order and to prevent any, any, any reductions this year, which, which is compared to his counterparts is a very positive thing. And the fact that we increased the smoothing for the losses is really going to help us. And then the ongoing state budget problems, we have, I have no clue what the state's going to do. We've talked about some of their proposals at our CEOs meetings. We've looked around the room. Not, very few of us understand some of their proposals, but hopefully the may revise will clarify some of them. Here are the specifics of my fiscal outlook for next year that quite frankly is very difficult to, to report out. Assessor projects a 5% decline in assessed value. What does that mean for us? Every percent decline in, in assessed value means approximately a $900,000 reduction in countywide revenue. Again, it's critical to know, counties are different than cities. Cities have a more widespread revenue stream. Counties are pretty heavily dependent on property taxes to the tune, in Tulare County's case, of 62% of our discretionary revenues are tied directly to assessed value growth or decline. That's problematic in this environment. So if the, if the assessor's projection is correct, our revenues for next year will decline by at least 4.5 million. Also, last year, part of the budget solution, we were buying time. We had a significant, significant decrease in revenues due to the sales tax changes that I just alluded to. We had the last year of our, of the only few labor contracts in place. So we were able to cover approximately half of the Williamson Act reduction with, quite frankly, contingency funds. We need to make that reduction this year, this, the remaining half, to our structural fund balance. Why is that important? Again, structural fund balances is, is usually generated with salary savings and excess countywide revenues. Well, we don't have any excess countywide revenues and people are, are not leaving their positions like they used to in, in our past. When I first came here, probably up to this last year, the biggest, biggest problem we had was we are the training ground for other agencies. We brought our salaries up to competitive levels and we, and that coupled with the economic downturn has solved our retention problem. But now it's created a budget challenge for, for, for me and our office in terms of getting back to the structural carryover. So, so we project a reduction to our structural carryover fund balance that we use to develop next year's budget of at least $1 million. And again, I, I put this in here, our retirement costs are consistent with prior years based on our actions, but one thing that we need, we need to keep in mind is we have approximately 400 less subvented positions. That means the non-subvented positions are going to have to pick up more retirement. And any reductions, future reductions in Health and Human Services will have that impact both in retirement and other overhead costs. This is one graph that really tells a picture of, of why we're in the situation we're in. And I know it's hard to read and I apologize because we put the numbers in the purple. But what this shows is the housing bubble, it shows the assessed values since 19, it's on the two-year increment, 1989. And they increased pretty significantly in normal for 15 years, from 1989 up until the beginning of the bubble around 2004. Then you can see significant increases from 2005 peaking out in 2008. Since then, the assessor has told me he is, again, with the 5% reduction projected for next year and what he's already reduced, which is approximately $2.2 billion in value. At the end of the day, when he brings his role in, if in fact it's 5% less than this year, that will be $3.7 billion in value that have been reduced in a matter of three years. That's significant. You know, I, I made the comment and I've told folks how difficult it is for the northern counties because they're, they're like, they're going through the same thing we're going through. San Joaquin County had a 15% reduction in value. Again, ours is projected for five. So before I go, go further, I thought it would help to put in context the situation that we're in by briefly noting what other counties are going through. Alameda experienced $178 million shortfall in this fiscal year. Fresno is projected to reduce, had already gone to 36-hour work weeks in, in a number of areas in their, in their county. They're looking at 10 to 12% decreases for 10,000, 10,011, and they're not convinced that's enough. Glen County reduced their employees' pay by 10%. And this is a, this is a head, this is a lot of different information that my staff cleaned through digital clipping services over the last couple of months. And it's not consistent relative to the total budget and employee impacts, but it'll kind of shed some light on where other folks are at and, and the fact that it could be a lot worse other than some of the, the things that we're doing internally. Kern County is requesting 20% reductions in next year's budget because of a $40 million increase in retirement. Madera County, a friend of mine just went to work there and boy, he regrets it. They have a $4.9 million shortfall this year. They've already had 9% pay cuts and the overall shortfall going into this year was 26.6. So they have a $30 million problem. They're significantly smaller than we are. They accomplished it by borrowing from their roads fund, from their, their, their local measure, transportation measure. Ted, you should be thankful we haven't gone after it and we won't go after it. That's problematic. Marin County is projecting $50 million shortfall next year. Mendocino, 10% cuts across the board, projects 7.6. Merced County, another San Joaquin Valley, 33, they had $44 million shortfall this year. They had $33 million in cuts and they used $11 million in one-time monies. You can only go to the one-time well once or twice, depending on how big your well is, and then you, you're going to have to have more cuts. Monterey, they, they have $4 million shortfall this year that they have to deal with in addition to a worse budget next year that they didn't even put in the, in the paper. Orange County, the sheriff alone incurred $20 million in cuts this fiscal year and is looking at a $70 million shortfall next year. Placer did similar things that we did. They're projecting a $20 million. You're kind of getting a sense. Riverside has a $15 million existing shortfall this year, 71 projected for next year. Sacramento, $15 million shortfall this year that they have to deal with.
After laying off-
After laying off hundreds of folks and they projecting next year's shortfall to be $195 million. And they're really quite less than three times the size of us, to put it in context. And I'll finish here shortly. San Francisco, five, they're projected $522 million shortfall and some draconian measures in terms of laying everyone off and bringing them back at 37 hours a week. San Joaquin County, a neighbor, a good friend of mine is their CAO, he's struggling mightily. He's looking at 600 layoffs and a $54 million general fund shortfall. Last year, they met it with one-time monies. Those monies are gone. San Luis Obispo, $30 million shortfall, on and on. Santa Barbara, San Mateo, $100 million shortfall. And finally, and I, and I know I beat it to death, Santa Barbara, $40 million shortfall. This is the environment we find ourselves in. Two big reasons, and I mentioned them last year in my perfect storm slide. Assessed value declines at the same time retirement costs going up and economy, sales tax going down is not a good combination, believe me. So the governor's proposed budget, I'll go through this rather quickly because I know I spent probably more time than I should. Quite frankly, the, the state has done, outside the subvented world, they've already damaged us quite a bit. They're borrowing property tax money from us. They converted what, what few remaining justice programs to VLF, which is bringing about 80% of what was bringing in before. And now I think because they've taken virtually everything they can, or they're trying to, now they're going to, from my perspective, they're going to try to push services down to the local levels. Early release of lower-risk convicted offenders in the local communities being, is being bantered about. When 32 counties are under, under order to, for overpopulation, that's going to work out well. Again, they're deferring state mandates. Sorry, Steve, for sitting on the state mandate commission. It is what it is. And, and a big concern to me and I'm sure a lot of counties in the state, there were trigger cuts that the governor talked about in case they didn't get the, the 6.9 billion from the feds, which no one expected them to get. There are a number of, of cuts associated with those trigger cuts. The governor has put a lot of programs on the table in their entirety. It remains to be seen what ultimately will come out, but it will not be positive to our Health and Human Services Agency. Again, deferral, reduction, eliminated of various services is going to be, is going to be, that, that department's going to be hit hard. And I will reiterate the actions that, that John Davis and Kevin Marks and his, the other directors took in fiscal '08-'09 ahead of the curve has really positioned themselves somewhat to stave off any potential reductions this year, so I tip my hat to you. But the future does not look bright. And with realignment revenue still declining and what have you, it's going to be a challenge for not just us, but for everybody. And this is one area that was discussed at our CEOs meeting. We all kind of looked around and went, how in the heck is this going to work? But the state is, is throwing us a small bone by saying if we eliminate some of these large programs, you can use your county match for other programs. And, and we're like, okay, how's that going to work? And how does it fit with realignment and the poison pill, which are other issues that I, I promise I won't go into today. You know, there's been the funding swap proposal, gasoline sales tax for excise tax. Once again, there are no Williamson Act interventions proposed for next fiscal year. We're going to meet with other San Joaquin counties and other counties in the state next year to try to somehow save this program.
Next week or next month.
Next week, excuse me. What did I say, next year? I apologize. And that remains to be seen. Do we have any hopes of it, of there being any funding for it? I certainly don't, but it's worth a shot. We've get, we've worked on this for a number of years and, and we will continue to work on it till it is officially dead. And that brings up other issues that Resource Management will be bringing to this, to your board in case that does go. What do we do with the program? And then there's, there's a lot of deferrals of various payments that our auditor controllers having to deal with and has dealt with for the last year or two. And that will be an ongoing problem with the state and their cash, cash flow challenges. Future budget challenges, as I see it, I'm, I, hopefully the, the, the housing market has bottomed out. I'm not convinced it has, especially with those additional layoffs that are coming down the chute and some of those exotic mortgages that never should have been issued, coming due at times. But I look for unfortunately help, more reductions in our Health and Human Services programs. Cash flows will always be a challenge, you know, as if the CAOs don't have enough challenges with, with budget, the budgetary environment we find ourselves in. Now we got to worry about cash, give me a break. Increasing retirement costs are going to be an ongoing problem unless the market turns around. Again, the stock market went from 14,000 to 6,500 in a, in a one to two month span of time. It has since grown back to 10 and a half. It's got a long ways to go in retirement costs. I expect will be a challenge next year. And last but not least, like I said earlier, without, with, with limited to no excess revenues and folks not leaving their positions, in addition to departments leaving positions open and vacant to meet their targets, salary savings isn't close to what it was before. And next year's proposals will address some of that, but not all of it. Here is a budget schedule that, that is important to some folks. I will be bringing next year's budget to, to your board the 8th, let's see here, the 14th of September. The rest of the dates, you can go back and look at my presentation for. And this is something that has recently come to my attention. I didn't know with Sunshine Week this week, I think it's, I, I think it's commendable that, that we have this to talk about the transparency in government. I'm very proud of some of these changes that have quite frankly happened in this arena. We went from a paperless agenda process to where if you wanted to find out what was on the board agenda, you'd have to come down to our office in the entire county to get the agenda and ask for a board backup. February 26, 2006, we implemented an online board of supervisors' agenda. Michelle Baldwin and her employees did a tremendous job along with IT and, and implementing that process. So now we have made our, our agenda items available, all the paperwork stacks as high on a weekly basis to our constituents online. They can print whatever they want. Talk about improving transparency. You don't have to drive in from Porterville to get the agenda and the backup. You can go online and print up yourself if you're so interested. We also, after some discussion about audio, video, what have you, we, we implemented an online audio streaming of board of supervisors' meetings. So not only do people can get, they get their agenda items online and print whatever they want to their fancy, they can listen to the, to the board hearings online too, which has improved transparency quite a bit in my mind. We've also, with the effort, strong effort of our county council's office and Michelle Baldwin's folks once again, have put our digitized and easily searchable Tulare County ordinance online, which is very helpful for folks who are interested in looking at our ordinances and for staff in, in making the necessary changes to old and outdated ordinances. So, good job. And last but not least, another thing we're proud of, it's something we should have done before, is to get the word out of some of the positive things we're doing as a county. We, we got this up just in time before our, our trip back to Washington DC to lobby for federal dollars. You know, it's interesting, we sit through a meeting where we're told that the federal agencies are sitting on 200 to 250 billion dollars worth of money that they can't get out the door. What environment we find ourselves in. But we certainly are trying to get that money. It takes time. You certainly don't know the success of a trip one week later, for gosh sake. Give me a break. That, again, we're lobbying for a transportation bill that's likely to come later this year or next year. Is it worth going? Absolutely. 100%. We're also lobbying for disadvantaged communities. We're coordinating with, with a self-help group to, to get that done, working with our senators who've been helpful in the past. And if you want to find out and join our Twitter club and be an official county twit, which I joined a couple of weeks ago, in fact, I was a twit well before then, that's our website around Tulare County. I put my, I put my presentation on that website, so if you want to see it, print it, look at it, laugh at it, do what you will, it's on that website. We're also putting other outreach items. A lot of our, our press releases are going out there. And I want to thank Jed, Jed C., I'm not going to butcher his last name again, for doing an outstanding job in IT. You guys literally put it together in one week. Thank you very much. Do we have a ways to go? And I'll fi, I'll finish this up real fast. We also have our budget documents. We have our financial reports. We have cash receipt reports, cash dispersal reports online. If you want to go look at them and see them, go out to our website. And last but not least, if you have any questions about this budget, this year's budget, my perspective on future budgets, you can come see me anytime you want. And last but not least, here are my requested actions. Please, I'm requesting that you receive this mid-year budget report, approve the budget schedule and rollover budget for next fiscal year, approve the continuance of a hiring freeze, providing that my office enhanced discretion, a whole position's vacant, which we might have to be a little bit tougher on than we've been. And last but not least, authorize the auditor controller with concurrence of, of myself to process any budget adjustment resulting from this report. Any questions? I'll field them now.
Questions by members?
Well, just one question that I, I would have and I noted it when I was reading over the agenda. I, I looked at it and I said, well, what departments are not going to be meeting their budgets and why? One question. And how are they going to meet the budget? Because this is the mid-year report, there still is time left. Is there going to be effort that's going to be made by those departments to meet the budget? Because I know that there's other departments that are having to really make some, or have made some drastic cuts to make their budget. And I think that all departments should, you know, definitely be held to their, their targets.
I totally agree. I totally agree. Like I said, all the departments in the general fund are going to meet their budget targets except for Resource Management Agency, predominantly from a few personnel changes we made and the general plan being a little bit more expensive than we thought. But the other departments have worked long and hard. You know, this is a difficult time. You have departments that want as much discretion over their budget as possible and as much discretion over negotiations going forward. discretion over negotiations going forward. And I certainly, we, I think we all have the desire to give them as much discretion as we can. The reality is, there are going to have to be some global decisions. Our office needs to vet through what future reductions mean in terms of service levels and what we're okay with. And we're going to need the cooperation of the departments like we have this year. Like I said, we, I've been very fortunate that we've had the departments that we have put in the effort that they have, and that's the only way we're going to get through this difficult time. It's very important that we don't start to have inter-family problems. This situation is bad enough as it is. It's very typical for departments to start to go after each other to a certain extent, to fight for their own. And although that's normal and natural somewhat, we need to understand the situation we're in and fight for the good for the whole. So, again, I'll be working with departments going forward the next few months. It's going to be a very difficult time, and we'll do the best we can to mitigate the impacts to our constituents and prepare for future years.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank the employees and department heads of Tulare County, because obviously, it takes a lot of cooperation to deal with these very difficult times. I also think that it's important to note that, I appreciate the context, our situation is difficult. When we look around us, at least it does not look impossible. I frankly don't know how many of these counties and cities are going to be able to contend with the kinds of holes that they're dealing with. It's remarkable that we have been as successful as we have been, I believe, in these difficult times. One thing, as interesting, I really thought the graph showing the real property values is very interesting, because as much as it dropped, when you look how far it came in such a short timeframe, going back to just a few years ago, we're still way over that. Now, that means it could still fall a lot further, too. But when you compare it to other places like Merced, where their property values have dropped 15%, because they had the much larger bubble, their increases went way, way high. The higher you go, the more you can fall. And so we're fortunate in that respect that we don't have that. But we have difficult days ahead of us, but I'm very optimistic that because of the way we positioned ourselves now, we will weather that. And we know we're going to weather it much better than a lot of other agencies. And the last man standing rule says, if you're the last man standing, you're the last man standing. The state of California cannot afford to allow all the counties of the state to fail. And so that does temper what they are able to do to us. They will continue to look, obviously, for any money they can under any rock, but at the same time, with the difficulties that other counties are facing, they're very close to forcing them off the cliff. So I really want to thank your office, Gene, and again, our staff. Again, it's painful to see positions. When we say 605 positions, it's, at least, that's not 605 bodies, because we've been able to hold positions open to retirement and so forth and transfers and not have to lay off that many people. But that is sizable. I mean, when you look at the biggest driver cost for government, it's the labor cost. And so the counties had to make very difficult decisions. But if we didn't make these decisions, the whole enterprise is in danger of collapsing. And that's what we're facing, and what other agencies are facing. They're, the state of California, is going to have to reduce the size of their employee population base. There's no other way to do, to meet those kinds of cuts without doing that. And this county has taken, I think, a broad perspective, realized we have to live within our means. We don't have a large reserve. You didn't talk much about that, but our reserve is small. And some counties have tried to keep things afloat by hitting their reserves, and some of them had larger reserves to hit. But once you start reducing those reserves and using them up, there's nothing left when they're gone. They're one-time monies, and when they disappear, they disappear. And so we don't have that luxury even of trying to try to do that. But our reserve, as small as it is, has been, we've held, been able to hold it intact. And if we have to squeak a few dollars out of it, at least it's there to do so if we need to. But I appreciate the report, and I think it's very helpful for us to know as supervisors. I think it's very important for the public to understand that Tulare County government is fiscally responsible and that we are learning to live within our means and will continue to do so in the future. So, thank you very much, and I would now entertain a motion to take the action requested by the CIO.
Motion approved for staff recommendations.
Motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Innes. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you. That, we have one final item, which is an information item, the bid opening results for the history of the Farm Labor Museum elevator project. Brian, give you a chance to, you've been sitting here patiently, don't want to give you an opportunity to speak to this matter.
Good morning. Brian Summers, Capital Projects and Facilities Manager. Yeah, that was some good news that we had on the bid opening. Apparently, the third time was the charm on this. We tried to complete it as a change order through the project and couldn't quite bridge the price gap, took a second round at it with the job order contract, and again, couldn't quite get where we thought it should be, and were very pleasantly surprised with the numbers that came in. I was a little concerned with the number of bidders we had, but elevators are kind of notorious problem children, so the two bidders that we did have are very good contractors, so we were comfortable working with either one, and I look forward to getting this project started. Any questions?
I have a comment. I believe that that elevator is going to accelerate the expansion of our museum in a very short order.
Absolutely, we'll support that. Once that elevator's installed, as soon as communities, donations, or other funding is available, then absolutely, we can look to expand upstairs.
Thank you.
I was very glad to see that it was a Porterville Construction Company. In fact, the same construction company that built the museum is going to put the elevator in, so that's great. Webinson.
Absolutely. They were a very good contractor to work with. We're very excited to be working with them again on this project.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Council, we have need for closed session, I understand.
Chairman, Item A, wrong binder. Item A is off agenda. You have already heard Item B. I do have a request of your board regarding Item I. And if you'd let me, give me a moment to turn to my notes here. Item I was listed for potential litigation because the county had been threatened with litigation by a man named Richard McKee. Mr. McKee filed suit on March 11th. The complaint has not actually been served on the Board of Supervisors, but we did obtain a copy, I believe, late that day or early the following day. This was after your board's agenda was posted. In my opinion, the board needs to take action today regarding its legal strategy and the actual litigation. I am therefore requesting that board amend Item I for closed session to discuss actual litigation, that being McKee versus Tulare County Board of Supervisors, case number Tulare County Superior Court 10-236639. This action does require a two-thirds vote.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. By Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Innes, and it is unanimous.
And then, so you would have remaining before you Items C through J, with Item I as amended.
Thank you.
And I do anticipate an announcement.
I'm Gene Rousseau, Ked Administrative Officer, reporting out of closed session on Item G to consider the discipline dismissal or release of a public employee. The board did not take any reportable action in closed session. The vote was five to zero with Innes, with Ashida being the first and Innes the second. In regards to Item H, once again, I'm Gene Rousseau, Ked Administrative Officer, reporting out of closed session on Item H to consider the discipline dismissal or release of public employees on a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Innes. The board voted unanimously to dismiss the sheriff correctional deputy. Thank you very much.
This is Kathleen Balesline, County Council. This is a partial announcement. The board remains in closed session.